Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, March 15th. It's 6:04 PM and we're gonna start the work session. Let's stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, and then we can start. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to have a moment of silence to honor the military firefighters and road workers as they work here and abroad. Thank you. Tracy, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McWhire.
Present.
Trustee Beck.
Present.
Okay, so first thing on the agenda is old business. And we're still working on finishing up the job descriptions. I think we left with having quite a few of them finished. Just lack of communication. Where, when, we got a concern, we've got something I have to do, or you know, where do we stand on that?
I don't remember. I actually said that I was gonna do it. And I actually sent both you and Jim, you responded, the updated version.
Yes.
I emailed that to you all. I have it right here. If you need me to send it to you again, Jim needed me to change it from non-exempt to exempt, right? Do you remember? For the administrative position.
Well, we didn't talk about it. We were talking about the Birmingham Township version of the job descriptions. I don't think I remember all that.
Right, right.
But in that version.
Because you brought it up, that on there it said non-exempt. And you said that we were not, well, that was...
That wasn't anything that I brought up.
Yeah, you did, because that's how...
No, I just didn't let it, so we did.
Yeah. Okay. Anyways, it was changed from non-exempt to exempt position, right? Because it's the salary position.
That, I'm not really clear on how we should set that up, so I can't... That's why I said I wouldn't have brought that up. So the Miami Township version of the job description.
I sent it to both you at my, so...
I thought it was...
I'll send it to you now. All right, I just sent it to you. It's just a letter that I was working on. Since we don't have the zoning, unfortunately. As for your information, that's it. Hi, how are you?
Tracy, the guy from the county was here today wanting to make a key. So you only made an extra key?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't need one anymore. Where'd you get them done?
What is it, the loans and home people don't, they don't do it. What's the, they love the Ace Hardware.
Oh, Ace Hardware.
Ace Hardware did it. Because they have the, because the key is double sided.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I went to the Ace, the new one, they could not make. I went to another key guy.
Yeah.
They went down and checked.
Yeah, out in Myersburg.
Right, probably even got mine. All right, have a good meeting, ma'am.
Thank you.
I've got the copies that Charlie put together.
I'm not sure if that, the book I sent or something.
Yeah, I've got copies.
And I'm not sure if that's what that is or not. Okay, now.
What is it?
The new filing for the, what you sent to the panel.
It's the, are you on...
Is it the served grant?
No, it's not a grant, I think it's called posting.
Yeah, yeah.
Once we get through, are we still on job descriptions?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, there's three copies.
Last meeting, we talked about...
Administrative assistant, thank you.
Okay. Okay. The only thing that I did to this was I removed the verbiage where this job was originally set up to report directly to the administrator. Okay, so I took that verbiage out and added back in the meeting minutes and payroll.
Thank you.
Which those were reviewed now. The thing as a whole is a merger of what? Horby's old job description and Adrienne's, so it's, that's why it's so lengthy.
Okay.
So I left full time in there because it seems like there's a need to have somebody at the window, but that's something, I mean, we could call this a rough draft, but either way, this gives us something to work with to post the job.
Well, I guess we could probably do the same thing that Mike mentioned, we could do part-time, full-time.
We were gonna do that. We went back and forth on the code and zoning, we talked about making one job, we talked about starting out because of the backlog of the code we have. Starting off as full-time and going to part-time. I think all the jobs, except for the administrator, oughtn't to be advertised either. You wanna put this as either, or do you think it's strong enough to be only posted as full?
Well, I mean, do we need a full-time? Do we need somebody at full-time? I know we talked about main and the window.
Do we have...
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, well, okay, let's back up.
Yeah.
There is an unfilled, we approved administrative assistant payroll fire. That was never filled. So we fund this position based on, okay, with the amount of personnel we deal with, fire. You can split the, you can make it full-time, they share the costs depending on how you set up, set up the job. Okay? I think Adrienne worked full-time. The job was a full-time position, but she only covered the window till noon.
She just covered the window till noon, and did she mention phones after that? Okay, all the way up until time?
She had, I mean, I feel, based on what I saw, she had capacity in her schedule. So she could have taken on more work if she wanted to, but for whatever reason. But I do know that when she was doing minutes, that was taking two and a half to three days of meeting of her time.
I know.
And then, of course, the crunch time. Well, that was worth the work. So I'm just kinda giving you a layout of how the workload...
Would I do it word for word anymore? Not maybe, whatever, but you'll spend, I'll spend two, three hours, like tonight, the regular work session, add the regular meeting, you add three hours of it. In this one, because you gotta watch the whole meeting. I mean, I'm not taking notes as we do it, I'm not taking notes as we're doing this now, so I'm watching it, watching or listening to it, and then writing it down. You got at least as much time as a meeting to it, plus that, because you stop it, you know, stop it and things. So I think, I don't think it's two, three days anymore, I think it's two, three hours. As far as the task.
If it's cut down like that, because I did hear that it took a very long time to be able to get that done.
More about work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this is pretty much catch-all job description, but it gives us, I mean, enough to work with to post the job. So if we fine-tune this down or amend it, but this is, this is what we had. And this is what Adrienne was working on there.
And you just put back the minutes in there with the payroll, like, get it, get it, took that way to work overtime.
Yeah, we had to take that out.
Yeah.
We had to separate those duties.
And then we put our, we put back in some of those HR duties that were assigned to Tracy. Because some of the reason, some of the reason we wanted to do this is so we can take some of the workload off Tracy. And so I do see in here where you have support of his officer with various payroll duties.
I left it very open-ended on purpose.
That was good.
We can either break it out. So that's just some of it, it's a catch-all.
We're gonna have an issue, just an oddball question. We're gonna have issues making a, making a full-time position, which is part-time for the fire department, and being here. Do you see problem with that, correct? No, okay.
What was that question you said?
So Jim was talking about back and forth about part-time, full-time. And make it full-time in that she would incorporate, because we did, we did have a resolution, Jim's right, we passed a resolution to have assistant in the Fire Staff to help. And that was never filled. Position was made, but never filled. And if we incorporate some of this and have them, this person will spend part of their time to make it full-time, spend their time being, helping the fire department. Is that doable for the same office, or would, would that person go from here to there every day? Can that be done from here, correct?
Well, once you have the resolution, fire, who goes into that? We can take care, we can basically just put a line there, go fund it through X of X. Because I assume you're not gonna want to put this all against general fund.
Correct.
So... The other thing we might, we might wanna do is make it close to full-time, make keep aside paying benefits and all that type thing, you know, 30 hours a week, but up to 30 hours a week of part-time. I mean, it just depends on who's out there.
Well, yeah, and who applies, because it's a shortage of people applying for work. So do we ever come up with a salary or a pay rate? Things between 13 hours, $30 an hour, and blank. Okay, so you left that blank for...
I looked that blank, but looking through the budget you guys passed, there are line items of different departments that fund this position pretty well.
Mm-hmm, okay. And I think it could be split out four ways.
It'd be, I mean, it'd start, foot hammer is 15, I think, you go 15, and then change that 13 to 15. You gonna deal with that? Well, we can't discuss it now, but we'll discuss that at the meeting, but...
So if, if we're talking about with benefits and all of that, so do we take that into consideration?
I mean, that's before the...
15 and part-time.
15 and part-time?
Mm-hmm, 15 and not part-time.
So then they won't...
I think that job, I mean...
Then they won't give benefits?
The previous person did have a lot of available time. And that was with doing words for orders after the day. And not doing that anymore, so I think there's time available there to do both sides and still go to work 30 hours a week. I mean, it's gonna be, all these positions don't pretty much be a trial and error, part-time, full-time. Code, zoning, we discussed that last meeting.
So, but if you did it full-time, then you're quite, you're spending the cost of months, all the departments, right?
No, I mean, we can, we can fund the job. I mean, it just depends on the workload, but if you follow the, you know, 50 firefighters, so there's your 50 payroll versus the rest of the office. So, you know, any zoning support, that's general fund money. So it's really gonna be, and Road doesn't have that much need for administrative support.
Well, I guess it maybe had, maybe it might, because I think they're going, but you're gonna be doing some different things in the road department.
At least, yeah.
But this sounds, this is a really good start. I think, I kinda think starting out full-time is good.
Okay.
And I think 15...
We'll make a decision at the meeting.
I think 15 sounds good, that's what my, that's my input.
I mean, the one thing, I mean, this was written back when the job market changed significantly. So I think the applicant pools don't tell us whether or not we've got enough money in there or not.
Absolutely.
But everybody's got different, you know, depending on, everybody's got different needs. So we might find lucky with two part-timers, something like that, piece it together that way. But keep in mind, you're getting it full-time, you're getting the benefits across, and full-time employers get offers, which adds to the total cost.
Okay, we'll just start out as part-time and see how the public workload goes, and if we have to do it. I think it'll be done in part-time.
I don't think it could be done in part-time.
You don't consider...
I said I think it will, but I think initially, it's a lot of work to get, catch up on. It's a lot of work to catch up on. We're gonna have to catch up on zoning, code, any administrative duties, whatever new administrator comes in, gonna have to deal with that. Ordering supplies, getting the, our part of the facility up and functional, we don't have any, like, coming to clean the building.
Well, we could be good part-time, we do have, where a time this person gets seated halfway through the year, so 1500 and a half hours a year on a part-timer. You could pretty much work full-time through December and still stand at a part-time. So you could work, you know, somebody wants to work that term, it's kind of ours.
I mean, we might be able to find somebody that wants only to work part-time, like Corrie. I understand that she was doing really good. But then you might want somebody full-time, so that part-time, full-time might work out.
So list, both listed?
Tracy did it.
List the both ways?
How does that look for you? Is there anything on there that...
It's real general.
Well, that's a good thing.
Well, we, all you do is put them out there and see what kind of response we get.
Right.
And then we have to make some changes, because we're not getting anybody looking. You know, job markets.
Scarcity.
Yeah. So back on the administrator, that non-exempt exemption, something we had, little problem you have with that, you told the...
I know I didn't bring that up. And the reason I say I didn't bring it up is I have trouble keeping it straight. So to challenge it, I would, I, that's something I always have to look up to know.
Right, I actually have to look it up, because you said that, and I didn't know what was the difference between exempt and non-exempt. And that's why I looked it up, because I wasn't gonna change it. Because I thought it actually went like that, but you made that statement. So either way, even if you don't remember, and I do, we just look at it and see what your thoughts are. We did make sure to include that at will in there, because that's gonna be kind of major in, you know, going forward.
What are we thinking about in ways to post these jobs? So we sort of wanna go with...
Well, I already took an Ohio means job, I think we should do Ohio means job, I think we should do our website. I think I talked to Tracy about seeing if there is, if we can, what is it, LinkedIn? They match workers' resumes with potential employers. So they're kind of a good one. Those are like the three that I am aware of.
Govjobs.com, it's pure government, and it's catch-all.
Or another, okay. Say how it is, you'll lose that cost stuff, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the people in this business are gonna be working there.
Good point, okay, yeah. Is that, I presume it's, that's across the, both across the country, but I presume it's breakdown by local, you post your job, just in any area.
Just like every other search engine, you set it up by state or job or whatever.
Somebody that lives in Texas and wanna move here to just to get a job.
Yeah.
Maybe they're gonna have to pay a little bit to set up the account and then upload, upload the posting.
All right, well, that sounds good, so I'll take care of it. I mean, that's, you wanna do that, Jim?
I wanna do it. Govjobs?
You know, set up the, set it up.
I can, yeah.
All of them would just do it?
For all the jobs?
I can do Ohio means jobs.
The posting places, yeah.
But, so you wanna do Gov, Govjobs.com?
Yeah, we can set it up.
Okay, and I'll do Ohio means jobs. And I think, I'm pretty sure there's a fee for LinkedIn. But there's a lot of people on there nowadays. And then, of course, we have the township website, so I can send that to Patrick.
Which brings into the question, we don't really have a standard for advertising jobs, or how long an advertisement should be out there, or anything like that. So...
Last week, we talked about it's gonna run all, still, said put it eight on there. Did you decide in the last meeting, talked about the last meeting, do we run a bill or, bill's filled?
I probably said two weeks.
You said two weeks?
That way you can get a bulk of people and then go through those and, 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 you know, see what you come up with.
You can see what the responses are, but...
Yeah.
I have seen a lot of postings that's open till film.
Okay, so as far as which ones are posting? The administrator, we talked about here first. The administrative assistant, we just talked about that one. Code enforcement, zoning, road and cemetery super. And then the last thing we discussed in the meeting was equipment repair.
We want those to...
Sound good?
Mm-hmm, I mean, we have all the positions ready, right?
Yeah, you agree with that, Jim? You agree with that?
I mean, did not get your email.
Who, me?
The job description, you said you sent it. Last email I was showing is your response on the top, top email.
So we, you guys don't sit together?
Don't use the screen, or?
Do you have a read that is, like, yeah, that's 7:20, 6:05?
Yeah. Who would find that just? I got it, 6:27, right, you got it?
Well, I just sent it.
Well, we came through at the same time.
Yeah, 6:27, that's twice the 6:27.
Oh, sorry, but you seen it says 6:05, oh, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, well, we know that one, the next one, and I just wanna, we agree, Sheila did a great job, the primary insurance. We are caught up on that, Sheila, you did that, you mailed it?
Yes, we got it completed and some of it did that. And we haven't gotten anything back, so we're good to go. But we still at some point need to go back and do a thorough inventory, but for now, we're good.
I had a question that I presume, I presume we'll answer. We had this insurance on this building. It didn't mean this building, it meant like renter's insurance, something, right, or what? I saw, I saw a policy on this building, right?
Yeah, it was on the last page.
Yeah, it's a good clip, of course.
Yeah, that's what that is. Because whoever originally submitted it, that's what they put it there.
Okay, so I'm glad you saw me have the question mark there, okay?
Yeah. So that's why I was thinking...
The county, your landlord carries the insurance. I don't know if that means our stuff in here, but that could be under a different clause, we have a clause for that.
They had a line up for the content.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so...
Well, what they have, we, I put on the, if there was any questions or anything to get back with us. And so what you submitted, then which one else submitted.
Okay, okay.
And thank you all for getting that together.
We had, just so you know, Jim, we went through, so we went through the inventory. We had several trucks out there that we no longer own. That Chevy truck, no, Dodge truck we drive was on our, was on the policy, it's on there now. Nothing's a piece of junk, we'll get rid of that.
That's what I submitted, I was just. But, uh, Tracy has it, so she can have it, uh, for any hundred records request.
Thank you for working on that. It's not on the list, but next thing under, uh, old business, I might discuss is our, uh, American relief funding. I, I haven't been on UAM, but we get our second draw, Tracy?
No, just the, um, the reality testing part.
Okay, it was twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, so I can't, fifteen hundred, okay. Okay, anyway, guys, uh, so I went to this classes there, and I've been on the Ohio, Ohio Township Association's website. So, there is a legal firm that's representing the townships, um, so we do everything right. This funding started out being a, um. Basically, basically for people that lost money and the Corona issue and American relief, so that's what it means, but. It, when I sat in that meeting and I'm just scratching my head how complicated the way it was originally written. And how you would pass that money out, divviate that money, and who gets what, what goes to what, and, and, and just shake them ahead, this is their whole thing, so. Then in the final draft, the feds stated that anybody that gets under ten million dollars, which of course is us, we're getting seven sixty, give, give or take a little bit. You can, and I, and I print out the resolution, uh, there's a resolution made by the legal firm. And I, I do want to reiterate with them, with the OTA and this legal outfit, that take their form, take their form. And put our name in it, and our, 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 paste, uh, paste our stuff in there, and send it back to them, is this okay? I'd like to kind of have that ready and looked at by legal, I don't necessarily think we need to get our legal people involved, I think that legal team, those we've been looking at, the ones hired by the state. And if they want charges a few bucks for doing that, I'm okay with that, but I want to have that thing correct. But that gives us the ability, so basically, you're paying that, you, you taking that money, and would use that for general operations. So, then we need to start thinking as a group, what we're gonna do with that money. And there's some things that, uh, jump out at me, um, uh, we start talking about it, but we need to, we gotta spend that money. Uh, I think the doors at fifty-nine, the prime exam.